Good evening. I wish to open the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 1st, 2021. I'll ask for a roll to officially start the meeting. Don?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Ed?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
And I'm here as well, obviously. Our next order is to, I'd ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their republic. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And Joe, of course, thanks for putting the flag up there. We move to the COVID update. Hello, Megan.
Good evening, Larry. Good news this week, we have some lower numbers and what we have is a percentage of positivity rate of less than 4%, which is fantastic news. We have a total of 574 cases of COVID-19 in the town of Harwich so far. And we have slowed down with our new cases. And at the moment, we're only following six active cases, which is an incredibly low number. Looking back at the last few months, we've had double digits for many weeks. And here we are now with just six active cases. So our positivity rate is 3.45 and lower than we were a week ago. We had 953 tests administered in the last two weeks and 33 of those were positive. So we're heading definitely in the right direction. Last week, Governor Baker announced some changes to the reopening plan effective today, March 1st. All cities and towns in Massachusetts are moving back, or hard to say backwards, but we're going back to step two of phase three. And we, if you remember, the month of January and most of February was a temporary restriction. So we're, we're back to where we were the beginning of the year and we're up to 50% capacities for most venues. We have recreational activities, restaurants have no capacity percentages any longer. They are still restricted to social distancing, so they have to stay six feet apart, limit six people per table. And the 90-minute limit still remains in place for restaurants, but they're no longer restricted to the 25%, which is great for businesses. Other things that weren't previously allowed are now allowed in this phase three, step two. Indoor performances are again able to get going and they're able to reopen at 50% capacity. So those have been closed for quite a while. And then we have an announcement of potentially going to phase four, March 22nd. So we're, we're hoping all goes well as, as we move forward, but March 22nd will be dependent on public health data. But if we stay on the track we are on now, we should be into phase four, which is incredible news. With that, it comes with larger gathering limits and some other openings like indoor and outdoor stadiums. We can have 12% capacity. We can have gathering limits have been increased to 100 people indoors and 150 people outdoors for gatherings of professional events. When we're talking about private events, those are still reduced 25 people outside and 10 people inside for those private house gatherings. But we're looking at bigger numbers for events at 100 people in and 150 out. And good news for people getting married, after March 22nd, dance floors will be open again for weddings. And then we'll see if, if things can continue to reopen after that date. And it all is dependent on, on how much vaccine can get into the arms of, of our residents. We need to get as many people vaccinated as possible, which leads me to the vaccine update. We're still in phase two and we have the same groups eligible as last week. We haven't added any new groups this, this week. So we're looking at people age 75 and older, low income and affordable senior housing residents, first responders, people age 65 and older, healthcare workers, convivial care settings, and then people with two or more comorbidities. There's been lots of talk about vaccine shortages, especially in Barnstable County. The health agents, health departments across the Cape are well aware of the shortage. We've been working out ways to get our most vulnerable populations vaccinated. Today, we had a follow-up call with Outer Cape Health. It's not the first conversation we've had, obviously, but we do have a solid plan in place to get our homebound vaccinated in the next two weeks. We have a plan in place to get our senior housing done in the next two weeks as well. So we're working on that. Barnstable County has requested more doses. We do have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, so I'll have more information on whether they're actually going to be doing a regional clinic each day of the week or if they're still working on cleaning up the second doses. Right now, they're working on getting people, second doses that had had their first doses through Barnstable County. So if you've had a first dose through Barnstable County, you will be remembered and you will be accounted for by the county. And they will be sending you a separate email, separate from the state email, giving you a link to a second dose clinic. You've been getting a lot of questions about that from the public, anxious about, how do I get my second dose? And if you were given a dose at one of the regional clinics given by Barnstable County, you will be, you will get a secondary email with a special link that goes to second dose clinics. So we, we haven't forgotten about you and just keep an eye on your spam folder. If it's been more than three weeks since your initial first dose and you haven't gotten an email, please do call the Barnstable County hotline and let them know and they'll rectify that situation. But I'm happy to take questions.
Questions, comments for Megan? If not, thanks. Thank you, Megan. It's good to know things are going the right direction. Did someone comment?
I have a question. That's Steve Ford. How does a, how does a caregiver get vaccinated? Someone who, for example, takes, you know, care of their husband or, or wife or, you know, a family member on a regular daily basis, is that something that is given consideration to?
Yes, there's several different types of vaccine clinics. So there's the county ones that are done regionally, and then there's the mass vax sites. And then there's the ones that are done at, like CVS or Walgreens or things like that. Each one of those has, has an online registration and a caregiver goes on and registers just like a person who is eligible otherwise. And they, there is a section to check the box that says, I am a caregiver instead of, I am 75 or I am 65. So there's a separate box for it. When you go to the clinic, you have to accompany the, the person who's eligible.
Right, okay, okay.
I had a question.
Okay.
My question is, as a family member who's concerned about their mother not having the ability to have internet, how does that work? If someone does not have computer capability or doesn't have access to a computer, how could they bring their elderly relative to get a COVID-19 vaccine?
Caller, can I ask you just for the record to identify yourself and then I?
Happy to answer your question. You just have to tell us who you are.
Oh, I didn't necessarily want to identify myself unless I absolutely have to.
Okay.
Larry, in the minutes, how are you going to characterize?
I think, pardon? I, I think we're okay.
Characterize this if they don't identify themselves?
Yeah. Megan, I think you can answer that and we'll characterize it as not.
So if you have a, if you have someone you know that doesn't have internet access, you can have someone else sign them up. So if, say, you have an elderly parent that doesn't necessarily use the internet, but you yourself do, you can make the appointment for them. You'd need some basic information, like their name and date of birth, address, and you can use your own email as the confirmation. Also, Barnstable County has a hotline that does the same thing. If someone who doesn't have internet doesn't, also doesn't have someone able to make the appointment for them, they're able to log on to the system and make appointments that way. Another way is to.
Contact Outer Cape Health directly?
No, Barnstable County. You can also contact Outer Cape Health directly. That's another option. You can call.
What is the number? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. It just, I keep getting muted. What is the 800 number, please?
I don't have it in front of me. Hang on.
So all of this information is available on the town's website and several other locations there. But I think in the interest of the meeting, this is the update for the Board of Selectmen. So questions for the board first would be appreciated.
Okay, let's, let's move on and possibly caller number two, you could, you could call Board of Health directly tomorrow. I think I'm sure they can answer your questions.
You mean the Health Department?
The Board of Health, yes. Okay.
No, the Health Department. The Board of Health is a separate entity.
Right. Excuse me, Don. You're gonna, you're gonna get that through to me eventually, but the Health Department. Any other questions or comments for Megan? If not, Joel, is it okay to move to Cindy?
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few announcements I wanted to make. We have a full agenda tonight, but we're seeing our restaurants reopening. The newest one will be this Wednesday, Cape Sea Grill with their famous Locals Night. So any of, any of us locals can enjoy Cape Sea Grill Wednesday night. Also, We Can is having their 20th anniversary auction. It went live today. And it runs until March 10th. Then also, we just put out a very robust newsletter on Friday with various webinars and virtual meetings that are being put on this week. I know Christie's on the call with us tonight, but the Cape Cod Commission is doing many sector-driven, specific sessions. So we've sent those out to all of the businesses in town as well as other organizations that are having ways to survive and get through and recover the impacts of the pandemic. If anyone is interested in receiving the Chambers web newsletter, they can sign up on the website, which is harwichcc.com. We always put in what's happening around town as well as what's happening and information for the members and businesses. So for tonight, that's all for right now.
Thank you, Cindy. I agree. Very robust and well-done newsletter.
Thank you.
Very impressive. You set, you set the bar high. Other questions or comments for Cindy? If not, we'll move to public comments and public announcements. And Ed, I think you, you have a public announcement that you'd like to do.
Yeah, it sort of actually works well, following up on Cindy's presentation. I just, we were happy to receive today a notification from the Mass Department of Transportation that our application in the Shared Streets and Spaces program was approved, the Hybrid Main Streets and Reimagined Streets project for Harwich Center. And we were awarded $142,021 to put that plan into action. Once we actually come and determine what the final plan is and we have to get it completed by May 31st. So it was a fair amount of work to get the application in and it'll be a fair amount of work to get the project into completion. But I want to thank Griffin Ryder, who is a town engineer, was very instrumental in this and Bob Young of the SEAL Cafe, who I think spearheaded the push to put in the application.
Great news.
Thank you, Ed. That is great news. And I want to thank Joel as well for sort of organizing this. Griffin, your Bob, do you care to comment?
Are you asking for?
We, we have to move quickly. But no, we're, we're excited to, to get the money, but yeah, we have to turn it around very quickly. But it's, it's a good gesture from Mass Department of Transportation, realizing that, you know, we can improve this area. So we look forward to getting going. Thanks for the, thanks for the support of the Board of Selectmen, too. And Joe.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else for public comment or public announcement?
Larry, this is Bob Nickerson. I sent in my request to get on there for a few minutes. This is a good time.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Sure. I assume it's not something that's on the agenda later. It is.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Maybe I don't know if it's, I don't know how else to do it. So I thought public comment was the best place to do it. So first, I want to thank, give my appreciation to the town administrator, Joe Powers, members of the Board of Selectmen, the town employees for all their efforts for this last year. The administrative body and the BOS have met much more frequently in the effort to be responsive to the issues at hand. And of course, that's been well supported by many of the town's employees and other town committees. So I just wanted to, to give you my thanks for all that effort. It's a lot of time you put in. Just second thing is a question. I have a couple of things. One is a really clarification from what you said on the February 16th meeting, so I can totally understand how this all plays out. So I'm just going to read what I have. At the BOS meeting on Tuesday, February 16th, the BOS agreed to hold hearings upon receiving requests for the seasonal all alcoholic license renewal applications from Ember and the port. It is my understanding that the, once the applications are filed, the town has 14 days in which to schedule a public hearing. So my expectation is a hearing might be scheduled for late March. What I'm asking for tonight is clarification from the BOS and why the hearings will bring in the noise issues at this time as the original hearings for these establishments were focused on violations of the governor's orders. For the article in the Take Cod Times, it states, "The board said it will devote an entire meeting to the hearings and will do so, will also take into account the noise complaints made against the establishment." So my question is, so you asking for the public to input, public input pertaining to the noise violations that were concurrent with these alleged violations for these locations? Or are you looking for comments that were at any time about these locations? And I'm assuming this is done basically in support of the Ballaran factor. And then I guess my last comment is, can I assume the broader issue for the noise containment will be addressed in a separate hearing? And if not, why not? Larry, you're not in. You're not on.
Sorry, my phone was ringing. Joel, can I pass that on to you for a comment?
Certainly. I can speak to most of what Mr. Nickerson has asked. With regard to the noise containment issue separately, that, that would be a discussion for the board or an agenda item on that. It's certainly something that can be done for a number of reasons. And it's something that if, if we are going to have done, I'd like to see it done before the, the summer season kicks off. But regarding the statements that were made on February 16th and the resulting articles and where we are now, in just a few minutes, the board is actually going to engage in a public hearing on an application for a license. And at that time, you'll see that they're going to make reference to the Ballaran factors. And so under Mass General laws, chapter 148, when a license is issued, the board must, must rely upon the Ballaran factors to make determinations as to whether or not the application being sought is one that is beneficial to the town and using those factors to determine that beneficial aspect. The board may, if they choose, and the board has indicated they are so choosing, the board may rely upon Ballaran factors when a license comes up for renewal. It is not a required act of the licensing authority where it is for an application for issuance the first time. And as Mr. Nickerson has stated, there, there are several Ballaran factors and many of them get to areas where the community will be allowed to speak should an application for seasonal renewal come in and should the hearing go forward. And again, as I'll be going through in just a moment for the board's edification on your next liquor license hearing, there, the, some of the factors include a discussion of noise that's related to the establishment, how much noise they would generate, traffic size, as well as the views of the inhabitants of the town. And so the board has chosen to use their authority as a licensing authority, should those two establishments apply for renewal, to rely upon the hearing process to determine whether they should renew the license or take any other action to it. So the board is relying upon their expansive authority as a licensing authority and relying upon public input as it relates to the Ballaran factors. So I hope that explains what will be expected if the applications come in for renewal. Because those applications are, were the subject of disciplinary hearings, the board has opted to co-mingle the disciplinary discussion with the renewal discussion. And again, if I may, Mr. Chair, the question as to whether there would be a separate board discussion on noise containment, I would defer to the board members on that.
Follow-up?
No, thank you, Joe. I really appreciate that. I guess what I'm trying to get at, too, was I, I assume you're looking for people, if they're interested in getting on in that particular hearing, to provide input on any activities they've had associated with these particular venues at that time. Is that correct?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that that is correct. And both the chairman and the board will determine how, how much input they would be seeking on that. But that would get to the first Ballaran factor that's listed, which is public need, meaning a consideration of the public want and the appropriateness of a license at that location. And so anyone can speak to that or any of the other Ballaran factors at that hearing.
All right. Thank you for that. So Larry, I have one last second thing, which you're not going to want to hear, but I'm going to say anyway. So this is about the hearing, okay? And this is about where we've been in, in in our noise containment recommendations. So you know the dates, May 20th, 2019 is when the letter came from 70-plus neighbors to the Board of Selectmen. All right. So right now, on November 20th, November 2nd, the BOS voted to, quote, temporarily halt the ad hoc committee meetings. I get that. Selectmen McCaskill said they would get into it, noise containment, on a very near agenda. Chairman Valentine also commented that we, quote, "Don't take action as quickly as we need to sometimes," quote. Later in the discussion, Selectmen McCaskill said they would have a meeting on this issue within the next 30 days. Mr. Valentine closed at the issue stating that we'll bring it back shortly. That statement was made four months ago tomorrow. So my question is, when will we have this discussion?
Well, that's a good question. I, I'll ask you, Michael, to weigh in, but I do think we need to, it's gone further than we intended. That's, that's clear, Bob. And I think we'll have a follow-up discussion with, with Joel and see when we put that back on the agenda. Michael, any comments?
Just, just Larry, we've talked about this a couple of times in, in public meetings as to bringing this subject back. The last time was a few weeks ago and I did reach out to Chairman McNamara to get her available dates to suggest that be, for you to put this back on the agenda. I do agree that it's a subject that the board needs to take up. I do, I do know that the final minutes have been done and approved for the recommendations for the, from the Noise Containment Committee. I do know that there is a minority position on that committee along with some other, I think Bob Nixon may be one of them, but some other neighbors. And that minority position wants to be heard. I do know that a PowerPoint presentation with a suggestion from the minority position on the board is being sent to me within the next three or four days, which came out of his mouth today. So I do think that we've been waiting for some pieces of what Bob's talking about. And I would point out that, yes, we did get a letter from 70-plus people that were concerned. We've also gotten 70-plus on the, on the positive side. So this is a touchy subject that we need to address. One of the recommended changes is that the board act faster, which also speaks of what Bob has just laid out based on his dates. I do, I will point to COVID-19 and, and to Bob's initial comment to the board thanking us for how much time we spend and, and how many meetings we've had and how many important subjects we've taken up and not to minimize this. I think the board has done the best it can on this and that we will continue to strive for harmony in Harwich Port and the rest of the town because the, the charge was really the rest of the town and we did have some issues in West Harwich. So without being able to give Bob a specific date, Chair, I will, will reach out to you as soon as I receive the PowerPoint and the rest of the information provided or that was told that was going to be provided to me today by the vice chair of that committee, Bob Cohen, as well as the response from the chairman, Ms. McNamara, Mrs. McNamara.
Thank you very much, Michael. And so Bob, we'll take it from there then.
All right. Thank you both for your comments. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Any other, anyone else here for a public comment? If not, next on your agenda is a public hearing that Joe referred to. I'd ask, possibly, Michael, would you care to open the public hearing?
I sure will. I guess prior to opening the public hearing, town administrator Joe Powers mentioned that he had some comments for us on the Ballaran factors related to this, this license. And if we go into public hearing, the public hearing is for the public. So does the town administrator wish to speak before I open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Selectman McCaskill. I would if that's agreeable to the chair. Thank you.
It sure is.
Thank you. As Selectman McCaskill made reference and as I talked to in the previous discussion, and I apologize to the board. I was hoping for you to have this information before the weekend, but I did share with the board and it's just a primer that I've relied upon in my past responsibilities in other municipalities. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think it would be helpful for the board and for the general public, not only for this hearing, but future hearings, to just see how the Ballaran factors impact upon licenses of a distribution and sale of liquor. So if I may, the Board of Selectmen this evening, under this hearing, will be acting as the local licensing authority in reviewing and rendering a decision on the application that will come before you. The board must. the board must consider Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 23. And that law and section speaks to the public need, common good, and adequate number of locations in a municipality. Additionally, the board will use the Ballaran factors in your deliberations. The Ballaran factors come from the Massachusetts Appeals Court case, Ballaran Incorporated versus the Licensing Board of Boston. The Ballaran case clearly articulates the factors that will be used by this board to form a basis in this application to determine the issuance or denial of the requested license. The Ballaran factors are understood to be, number one, public need, meaning a consideration of the public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. Factor number two is consideration of the number of existing dispensaries in a locality. Factor number three is views of the inhabitants of the locality in which a license is sought. Factor four is traffic. Five is noise. Six is size. Seven is the sort of operation that carries the license. And the eighth Ballaran factor is consideration of the reputation of the applicant. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, as you're about to do, you would seek a motion by one of your members to open the public hearing. I'm then prepared to go through the application documentation and indicate the comments from town departments. I believe the proprietor and the applicant is on the call this evening. And Christian will have the opportunity to either make a presentation or answer any questions and then go from there. The board could then ask any questions of the applicant. And then, Mr. Chairman, you would seek if there was public input from any of those in the public who are in favor of the application, and then any of those who in the public may be opposed to the application. I'm just going to mute some people just so we don't have the background noise, Mr. Chairman. And after hearing, after hearing from individuals in the general public who are in favor or opposed, the board could then close the public hearing, and then the board would get into a discussion and make motions. And when you make motions, you have to refer back to the factors and whether or not you think the factor has a negative effect or a neutral or positive effect on the application, and then you render your decision.
Thank you, Joe. And I have those procedures in front of me, so we will carefully follow those. And so the first step then is to open the public hearing. Michael, if you'd be so kind?
I will. And I just wanted to comment based on the Town Administrator's review of the Ballaran factors. You know, we're getting into renewals now, and we're getting into hearings now. So I think it's very important that the board study these Ballaran factors because, as I read online today, the motions are the most important part. And referring to Ballaran factors, and I guess I would speak to ABCC, they're very specific that the process has to be followed correctly. And, you know, looking at this license tonight, you know, I guess I'll talk about it after the public hearing. Or my comments will be made during the selectmen's part after the public comment. But I guess my point is, we're embarking on a completely new process. And we have a lot of licenses that we renew. And it appears we're having more and more hearings. And the process on this is very specific. If we wanted to carry the weight of the board and not have ABCC rule our decision, rule against our decision based on lack of process. So this is an extremely important process if this is the process that we're going to choose to use. With that, Larry, I would make a motion to open a public hearing related to Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Annual All-Alcohol Liquor License for the WFS Restaurant Group, DBA Alouette 787 Route 28.
Excuse me, don't you have to read the public notice?
You could defer to staff on that.
Don, I will read the public statement, and my intent was to. I was just opening the public hearing first. But if you think it's more appropriate to read it now, I would absolutely.
I would go ahead and read the public notice as a way to open it.
Okay. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of General Laws as amended. That application has been made to this board for an annual restaurant all alcohol liquor license for WFS Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA Alouette, Christian Schultz, manager, on the following described premises located at 787 Route 28, Harwich Fort, Mass. 02646. A restaurant that consists of one floor, two rooms, limited outdoor seating as allowed by the town, and 1,000 square feet. Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application on Monday, March 1st, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 p.m. via go-to meeting, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to dial in.
With that, I second the motion.
Pardon? Second?
With that, I second the motion to open the hearing.
Let me take a roll call then, Don.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So now this is, Michael said, Joe said, this is more formal process possibly than done before. So we'll be careful to walk through the procedure steps. The next one is the documentation and comments from the town departments. And so Joe, we'll turn it back to you to review what was in our packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to make sure it's understood for the record that the board is going through this particular process because this is considered an application for a new license insofar as Christian's application was received late. And according to the ABCC, you could not weigh in on a renewal. It has to be treated as a brand-new request for a license. And so this process, while unusual, will be standard and is standard now for new licenses that the town may be issuing going forward. With regard to renewals, it's the town's discretion as to whether you want to use this. But given that this is considered to be, I know many folks are very familiar with this establishment and where it's been located and how it's been operated for so long. But it's a technical requirement of the ABCC that you take this up as a new license and treat it as such. So for that, Mr. Chairman, you have the hearing information. You'll see in the packet that it's been presented to department staffs to weigh in. You'll see that we have a memorandum from the police chief indicating that the police department has no objections regarding the application for an annual all-alcohol beverage license. And a background investigation indicates no disqualifying history. And so there's no objection from police department on that. You have in your packet a fully executed and complete application for issuance. And you have the floor plan sketched out by the applicant owner. And so at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest if you open it up to Mr. Schultz, if he has any comments to make for your consideration.
Thank you, Joe. As we've mentioned, the following procedure, the applicant is next on the list.
This is Christian Schultz. I apologize for being a day late on getting my application in. I've learned my lesson, and I would appreciate it if everybody would understand that during this tough time of COVID, after a very busy weekend, Thanksgiving, I was behind the eight ball, and I was a day late. I brought it in on Tuesday instead of Monday. And I apologize for everything that I put everybody through and for all the money I have to spend to get something that I've had for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Our chore at the moment is how we move forward on this. I'll take questions from my fellow board members.
Larry, first you have to let the public play out and then close the public hearing and then have us discuss.
And Larry, just to rebut Don, and I agree with Don, but the Ballaran factor checklist actually shows board comment, or not board comment, board questions first. So I agree with you, Don, but the Ballaran factor procedures we got tonight, I think Larry's actually correct that the board can ask questions now and then deliver that comment.
I'm following the guidelines very specifically, going through the number of lists that Joe provided with the Ballaran factors. And just to reiterate those.
Just clarifying, but they're questions and not comments at this point.
The list I have is that after the applicant has a chance to offer a presentation or comments, next the board has an opportunity to ask questions. And then after that, the board will ask for comments from individuals from the floor, basically. And then we'll close the public hearing.
That's all I was clarifying. It's not about us giving an opinion. It's about questions.
So, and that's why I've asked, are there questions on this now? Any comments from anyone that joined in the meeting then? Hearing none.
Larry, I would move that we close the public hearing and go to the selectmen's comment period.
Second.
The second, okay. I'll take a roll call on this. And Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed? Ed? I'm an aye. So we'll move on to now we have a chance for discussion by the board.
Larry?
Who's speaking? Michael?
Yeah. Absent, absent, and obviously I'll wait. I am prepared to make a motion on this. The only comment that I would make, and it's really directed, I guess, at Christian and for the public education part of this, Christian's comments, I accept your apology, even though you really don't have to apologize to us. This is not our process. This process is a state process. You didn't, I don't believe you've put the board through anything. And I believe that the staff, as well as Joe Powers, were accommodating kind of in the end to you, but there was nothing that we could do. The bottom line is the state sets the process, and a day late is a day late. And obviously, you were under a tremendous amount of pressure getting through Thanksgiving in a very busy restaurant with less staff than you used to, with very different protocols. So for me, this really is a no-brainer, getting the license back. But I just wanted to point out, it's not the town of Harwich. It was the state and the state's rules.
Yeah. I also want to say, I mean, I've been showing the Christian facilities, going back to Chatham. And I've gone this year, this past year, both pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, both out in the tent, in the restaurant, and gotten takeout. I've always found these guys to be solid citizens, so I have no problems with it. It's, I like what Michael said, you're only being put in this because it can't be counted as a renewal since you didn't hit the state deadline, and we're going by the state rules. So my comment is, I don't have any problems with this at all, and I actually have a fair amount of familiarity with the operation.
Michael, was that, I was entertaining a motion, and I think as Joe mentioned, and Joe, you'll help on this, be sure that, I understand, it has to refer back to the information in the hearing to be sure the motion is correct. So, Michael, this will be maybe a bit of a chore, but I hope you'll go for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep, I will. I'm going to let Joe Powers speak. Mike? If you could mute your mic, we're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you.
There you go.
So, Mr. Chairman, where you've offered the meeting for the input of the public, and the record shows that no public input was provided. You've met that criteria, those criteria, I should say. And where the board is aware of this applicant, even though this is an administrative requirement, this is an application and operation that is well-known to the town and to the board, and staff is not aware of any derogatory actions in their file. The board could dispense of the Ballaran factors by indicating that none of the Ballaran factors impact negatively upon the application. You could also make positive motions on some of them, such as the consideration of the reputation of the applicant or anything like that. But given that there was no negative information provided, the board could indicate that the Ballaran factors had no negative effect on your decision-making. You could make that as a motion.
Could that be part of the overall motion, Joe?
Well, I think first you would want to have a motion that disposes of the Ballaran factors and then rely upon that disposal to form your final decision.
So we need two motions, Michael, apparently, if you're willing to do that.
I am. All right. Standby. At this time, I would move that we dispose of the Ballaran factors related to the application, the Chapter 138, Section 12, Annual All-Alcohol Liquor License for the WFS Restaurant Group, DBA Alouette 787 Route 28.
Second.
Second discussion?
Joe, did that cover, did that cover it?
I did. It did. I would just say that if you would make a statement into the record as to why you made the motion in support of that.
Yes. My statement would be that this, that the Ballaran factors have no negative impact on the community. Does that cover it, Joe?
I think, and I think the other statement is, it says, "A well-known enterprise." And so we're comfortable with this conclusion.
And I would add that to my statement to the public.
Hearing another, I'll take then the roll call. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed? Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Michael, would you make the motion to approve the license?
Yep. I move that we approve Mass General License, Chapter 138, Section 12, Annual All-Alcohol Liquor License to the WFS Restaurant Group, DBA Alouette 787 Route 28, Harwich.
Second.
Second discussion? Joe, does that meet your criteria?
Absolutely. You've met all the requirements under the law. You've made your determination as to the public input, and it is well within your authority to make this motion to issue the license.
I'll take a vote then. I'm an aye. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed? We seem to have lost Ed. I'm not sure whether he can. He's muted, so I don't know. But it's carried 4-0 on this. So Christian, it looks like we've put this in place and we are, and enough positive things have been said. We hope for a very good season for you.
I'd like to say thank you very much, gentlemen. I know it's been a tough, tough road, and everybody's had a tough year. I appreciate the fact that you went through the process, and we've set a new precedent, and we'll follow through this forever. And again, thank you.
Thank you. Next then, for the public presentation, we welcome Chrissy Santorial from Cape Cod Commission to give us an update. And thanks, by the way, for such a tremendous packet in our material for people to read after this meeting as well.
Great. Well, it's nice to see you all. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes before you this evening. I typically visit the Boards of Selectmen and the Town Council from time to time. And I started this back in January of last year and was hoping to resume that in person, and here we are a year later. So I did just want to provide some updates on some of the work that we're doing and then talk about some of our priority initiatives for 2021. And hopefully you had a chance to take a look at our year in review. And if you haven't, certainly after the meeting, if you have any questions, feel free to, of course, let me know. It's not a comprehensive look at all the work that we did, but it does cover some of the highlights. So some of the work that we're able to accomplish over the course of the last year really focused a lot on water protection. And as you may or may not know, we provide administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, which is this new revenue stream for the region. Water Protection Fund, which is this new revenue stream for the region. And the revenue to date is about $11 million from July of 2019 to August of 2020. We're anticipating the next disbursement from the Department of Revenue shortly, but we are hearing early estimates of about $8 million from additional, for additional revenue from about September to January. So we're pleased that there's this new funding source available for our communities. And I wanted to thank Don Howell certainly for his participation in that management board, but as well as in the Bylaws and Regulations Committee. They've spent a significant amount of time identifying and drafting regulations for how the, the board will not only govern itself, but how funds will be distributed. And so we're pleased to see that the board at their last meeting did determine that projects that were listed on the 2018 Intended Use Plan, which of course includes the Phase Two Collection System for Harwich will be eligible for consideration for subsidy. So we're, we're happy to see that move forward. We also spent a significant amount of time working on COVID response and economic recovery and a number of initiatives, and I just wanted to highlight two of them for you. One is our data dashboard. So if you have another chance to look at it, it's datacapecod.com. And so we've developed a number of dashboards that provide different data sets of demographic information, economic data for the Cape Cod towns, some information regarding the economic impacts of COVID, and some regional and town data on unemployment trends, rooms and meals taxes, as well as housing. And the, the one that seems to capture a lot of attention is the traffic data. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, certainly that's available for, for you and for the communities, and we'll be adding a lot more data to this data dashboard site in the, in the future as well. We also participated in three surveys of the communities with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce jointly. We issued one around Memorial Day to our local businesses, one around Labor Day, and we just closed one of our recent business surveys. And at each survey, we had about four to 400 local businesses responding. And it was really an opportunity for us to capture the economic impacts to our local businesses in terms of fact-based data and information on those impacts, so that we can then help our local businesses and community inform kind of their resiliency planning. And so all of that information is also available on Data Cape Cod, and it really does capture a lot of the key economic indicators for, for how our region is doing, and it does go down to the town, to, to the individual town level. So those are a couple of the things and the ways that we've been able to kind of help our communities recover from the economic impacts. Of course, there's certainly a lot more to do, and we're looking forward to continuing to participate. I do serve on the reopening task force, which is now the COVID-19 Response Task Force, and look forward to continuing to, to provide some support and assistance. Shifting gears a little bit, one of the other priority projects and initiatives we worked on this year was the development of a climate action plan. So we really initiated the process for the first climate action plan for Cape Cod, and it included a number of stakeholder meetings and sector groups, and we worked in focus groups as well as with the municipalities. And we had about 200 stakeholders following us throughout the process. And one of the first pieces of, of really useful information that we developed at the beginning was the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So we now have an established database of information on our emissions in the region. So we can now use that to measure our progress and how we're doing in meeting some of those regional goals. We did an economic and fiscal impact analysis, as well as the development of a strategies database, which includes not only adaptation strategies, but mitigation strategies. And they are at the various levels, down to the local governments, regional governments, and upward to state and federal governments, and even some that other organizations, such as nonprofits and, and other organizations can, steps that they can take to adapt and mitigate to some of our climate impacts. So we'll be finalizing that climate action plan within the next several months and putting that out for a public comment period, and I'd be happy to, to share that with you. There'll be a section on local action too, so that we can work with the 15 towns and support local climate planning efforts as well. And then one planning project I wanted to highlight was, of course, the West Harwich District of Critical Planning Concern. I think as we reflect back on that DCPC, we think that was probably the fastest DCPC that's gone through that process from nomination to the development of those implementing regulations, probably in the commission's history. And I think it took a total of about nine or so months. And I just think that's a testament to the dedication, not only of, of you all as leaders in the town, but of your staff as well. And I think that was a very collaborative plot, process, and we were pleased to see the success of that. We're now supporting, our staff is now supporting the development of some of the design guidelines for the district, and we look forward to continuing, to continuing that relationship. And so some of the priorities that we will be focusing on for the coming year are really completing that climate action plan. But we also want to highlight some of our housing challenges in the region. So we'll be looking to issue a homeowner survey. And I think we've all seen or heard some of this anecdotal evidence that there are more people choosing to either remain in their second homes for longer periods, or they've moved to the region full-time due to the pandemic. And so we're trying to capture this information in more of a fact-based setting. So this spring, we'll be conducting a, a second homeowner survey, building off some research that we've done over the course of the last two second homeowner surveys that we issued in 2008 and 2017, really to evaluate how the pandemic has changed second homeowners' use. At the same time, we'll also be able to reach out to those that have purchased a home in 2020 to determine and understand the potential effects of the pandemic on regional demographics. Then it will help us for larger, long-term regional planning, as well as infrastructure, targeting additional regional initiatives into the future. So we'll be issuing that survey within the next couple of months, and hopefully we can use that data to, to help some of our larger scale planning initiatives. Also, on the regional housing front, we'll be developing a regional housing strategy, so working very closely with the 15 towns, really for the purposes of addressing housing supply affordability and availability in the region. We know we lack a diversity of housing in the market, and we know that we've got some difficulty in terms of availability. So we'll be identifying some housing supply goals with the communities, and in particular looking at multi-unit, potential multi-unit developments and affordable housing. And that will help us develop some policies and actions that can be implemented at, at the, the regional and, and local scale. So those are a couple of the kind of bigger housing-related strategies that we'll be looking at. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight where we're working in water quality. I mentioned the Water Protection Fund, which really is more geared towards our marine water quality in estuaries. And as we know, we have about 1,000 ponds in the region on the Cape. And so there's a need for a comprehensive water quality management plan to address freshwater ponds. And so we'll be compiling available data on our water quality for, for pond health and compiling this into a regional database to update our existing Cape Cod ponds and lakes atlas. So we can all, we can reflect the current status of water quality that's being collected in the region. And then they'll likely put together a larger strategy around water quality improvements for our freshwater, for our freshwater in the region. So the one, the one place where we like to pull a lot of our stakeholders together, and certainly all the leadership within the region, is at our One Cape Conference. We weren't able to do that this past year, but we're hoping to convene One Cape again in 2021, likely in the fall timeframe. We're gonna try for in-person, but I think we're gonna, you know, we're, we're very flexible. So we'll be, we'll be obviously open to a virtual setting and certainly want to make sure we're accommodating and, and making that safe as possible. So we'll keep you posted and look forward to your participation in that. So I'll stop there. I know I've, I've talked for a bit, but I wanted to just thank you. And, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now, or feel free to get in touch after the meeting.
Thank you, Christie. Questions? Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not so much of a question, but it's right back at you, Christie. Spent a lot of, you're right, we spent a lot of time at the bylaws for the Clean Waters Management Board. The real trick of that, it was about a year. The real trick of that was that the language, in my mind, and we achieved, I think, it had to do that. So there wasn't at the, larger towns getting money at the expense of smaller towns, or people that did things before at the expense of people who hadn't done them yet, so that would wipe out all the money available. I thought it was fairly equitable in the end, and I appreciated all of the staff help that it took to get to that point. Likewise, we've been seeing a lot of each other over the last year and a half. The DCPC was a remarkable process, and I really appreciated, and certainly the folks in West Harwich, really appreciated the, the assist that we got for that. The only negative thing, and it's not about you folks, I'm the chair of the Housing Trust too, and I know there have been just tons of requests throughout the last year that related to things that were regional initiatives. And I've had to actually point out that while they're commendable, and I would love to see a regional approach on this, that the towns aren't rewarded by the current legislation in terms of the penalties for 40B, if we were to kick in, say, for cooperative endeavor and booster, you don't get credit for that. And yet you should, because it's a, it's a region-wide problem. It isn't, it isn't just in this town versus that town, particularly in the Cape, because I believe you're right, that more and more people are moving here, whether larger periods of time during the year or the entire year, they're declaring this residency. I think we've gone up in full-time residence over 10% since last year, just as a town ourselves. So I'm not sure what kind of approach we want to take, but frankly, I think the legislation needs to look bigger at the problem instead of only rewarding initiatives within your own town.
I'm happy to respond if, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
I'll defer to the chair. Great. I, I think those are, are really valid points, and I think that's where perhaps a regional housing strategy can point out some of those reasons why the 15 towns maybe need to be treated a little bit differently than the rest of, the rest of the state. And so there's an opportunity to advocate potentially as, as the, as Cape Cod as a region for some of these unique opportunities that we have here. And yes, we did see a lot of each other this year, and I again, want to just thank you for, for your time and your participation. That was a lengthy process to get through, but I, I think we, we finally got there, and we did have representation on that board from large communities and small communities. So I think that was, you know, at the, at the end of the day, was, is equitable the way, the way the language was drafted. Thank you.
Good, Don. Thank you, Christie. Other comments? Questions? Joe?
No, we had a great conversation, Christie and I, with Megan a week ago, and we talked about Harwich specific stuff, but I thought it was a great presentation tonight.
I agree, Christie. It's very good. I, my only comment would be we, you have a lot of great initiatives going on. I think we're always looking as well, and I don't have any right on top of my, right now, but we're always looking for specific areas as well that we could come to you and ask for expertise that we may not have. So, and you've always been willing to talk to us about those. I like to be sure those channels are open, because sometimes is, and we worry about the climate initiative, for instance, but sometimes we have enough of those we have to worry about as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that comment. And certainly, we're open to providing direct technical assistance to all of the communities. And so reach out if there's anything specific that you would like to work on or collaborate on. And I did have a great conversation with, with Joe and with Megan, and we look forward to collaborating on some of these larger projects and figuring out other ways that we can support the town.
Good. Thank you. If no other comments or questions, thanks again for your great information in the packet, and we'll continue working together.
Thank you.
Next on your agenda is consent. Michael, would you care to address this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Daniel Pelletier's nomination to the Pleasant Bay Alliance Technical Resource Committee for a term of indefinite.
Second.
Any discussion? I, only comment is I appreciate, I appreciate Dan stepping forward to participate in the Pleasant Bay Alliance.
My only comment is just to point out to the public that Dan Pelletier is our, our water commissioner in town. So this, this is a good fit, and Dan has spent a lot of time getting ahead of some of the wastewater stuff, and I think he's a great fit for this position.
Yep. I agree. It's in his real house, and he will help them, and he will irritate them, I'm sure, as well, Dan. So it's great. I'll take a roll call then. Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed? I'm still trying to reach out to Ed. I'll try to text him and see if he's okay with one of our next discussions. But we have, that's been approved then, we'll go on to new business. Joe, you have a lot, a lot of these areas are yours. I'm gonna hand this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to you, the members of the board. The discussion this evening about the draft warrant is first for me to update you as to where I'm at on the warrant. At present, there are 54 articles that are currently in the draft. What I'm left to work on this week is finalizing the language for the Capitol Outlay Committee articles and the Community Preservation Articles, and that's, I think, combined 20 of the 54. In line with that, however, there are three articles that come up under new business. One of them is in response to Selectman McManus's request and directive earlier this year, as, as you recall at a previous meeting. But first, what you have up on the docket is two proposed zoning articles that are in the draft warrant, but you must go through the, the requisite step of referring these back to the planning board for their next steps before they come back to the board. And then, Mr. Chairman, I can speak specifically to items D, E, and F as draft articles. But at this point, if you want to proceed to items B and C, it would be for the board to make motions to refer those to the planning board.
I wish to do so. Do I have a, a motion to, to send these to the planning board?
I am prepared.
Please.
I would make a motion for a referral to the planning board to amend the Code of Town of Harwich zoning article 24, West Harwich Special District, by adding a new chapter or section, I believe, section 325-160.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Take a roll call, Don?
Larry.
Excuse me. Ed?
Yeah, that's Michael. I'm, I'm making this motion to send it back for a public hearing. In no way am I saying at this point that I am supporting this. And there's really no supporting documentation in the packet. I think it was a fairly basic overview of what, what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm not supporting this, and I want the public to know that as of right now, I'm not supporting this, but I, I think the public hearing and the process is important. Second part of my comments relate to a question that I asked a couple of weeks ago, and I, and I know it's being worked on, because Joe and I have had a conversation about it. But I'm, I'm very concerned with having a town meeting with very few attendees or just basically making a quorum. And I, I think zoning changes, however minor they are, need some more, need more, as many people as possible to weigh in. And I asked the question if, if zoning amendments, and I really think it's important as we navigate East Harwich and wastewater and, and other major zoning or potential zoning changes, that these end up on the ballot. You know, traditionally, we get over 1,500 people to the ballot, and we're only getting a couple hundred at town meeting. So I hope the board has that conversation, and certainly referring this back tonight is not me saying I support this or that I support it being on the warrant.
Uh, Don?
Totally agree with Michael. In, in, in the process, that's all we're really doing, is they come back afterwards, and we reserve the right to either support the zoning bylaw or not when we do the warrant positions. Secondarily, it's interesting, because we haven't had a discussion of, of time about this, but I, I agree with Michael. I mean, there's nothing bigger that you make as an investment in your life generally for people than buying a home. And the first question you always ask is what could be built there? What could not be built there? To get a feel for the neighborhood and what that's gonna look like. And frankly, I, I agree with Michael where he's going. It, it's mortifying to see that the state was bragging about for affordable housing zoning changes to going to 50% plus one, because it's, in a town like Harwich, you have seven villages, you get a low quorum at a town meeting, no town vote later on at a ballot, and you could easily have four of the villages just conspiring to say, well, you can take a hit for the town over here. And there isn't much you could do about that at 50% plus one. At least at two-thirds, you have some. At least at two-thirds, you have some certainty that it's a good idea, that the public supports it. So I'm just throwing it out there as we go along that I think we ought to go really carefully if we start toying around with this. It's probably, if I were going to support something, it would be going in the direction that Michael's talking about, getting more public sentiment on it, not like trying to get half of 150 people to go along with you.
All right, good points. I, for me personally, I had no way read this as support for these, only support to send it back for a public hearing, which is our process. And I do, and then at that point, when it comes back, we can take the suggestion or the good point that this needs full town participation, and we can make a decision at that point, I think, on where to go next. Steve, any comment?
No, I just said, Larry, I agree with those comments.
Okay. We have a motion and a second then, I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Ed, are you with us yet? This pass in. Michael, you wish to handle the second?
I will. I move that we refer to the planning board for a public hearing to amend the code of the Town of Harwich zoning by amending section 325-42L parking in the MRL and MRL 1 zoning districts.
Second.
Okay, in the same stipulations we, Michael and Don and everyone made before, this is a transfer only, no indication of support of where our next action is. So other discussion? I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And that's carried then.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest that we take D, E, and F out of order, as those were, I believe, all related to Selectman McManus bringing these forward, and move on to G, and then come back to those if we get Ed back.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
Joe, do you have, I have his home number, I'm not sure I have his mobile number in front of me. Could you text him for me?
Certainly can, and I just want to put out there, item D was Selectman McManus. Item E was me just providing that for the board, but I can explain later. And item F is necessary, according to council, if D or E is to be adopted by the town. And then item G, I would actually ask to hold off on that. Council was not able to join us this evening, but they will be present next week.
Okay.
I can go off microphone for a second and contact the Selectman.
If I could just ask one question to Joe. Prior to, prior to, and I don't mind going to the other two that Joe had put forward. If we delay him a bit, maybe we'll get Ed back. Joe, as far as G goes, and the one that you just said council couldn't be here for, maybe I did notice that there was nothing in the packet, and I guess my question that I'd like an answer for when we bring this back, there was no info in the packet, Harbor Road parcel 15-U23. I'd like to understand what that parcel is, how we acquired that parcel, is that parcel buildable now and won't be if we give a permanent easement? So just as much detail as you can before we bring this back.
And if I may, thank you. Part of the reason why staff pushed back, council thought they would be prepared to present this tonight, and it relates to a town meeting action, so we expect to have all of that material and information for Monday evening, the 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give Larry a second here, and then I'll get into H. Actually, I'm just going to make a motion on H unless I see head nods or any objection. Okay, I'll make a motion on H. I move that we approve the 2021 Annual Entertainment License Renewal for Morningstar Restaurant Inc., DBA Villa Roma, 278 Route 28, for weekday 4:30 PM to 10:00 PM inside only. And I would note, oh no, I'll do that afterwards.
Including any previous restrictions that might have been?
Including any previous restrictions the board's put on.
Second.
Larry, if I may, my only comment was just to point out that the box "recorded music only" was checked on the application, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
Public's knowledge, it's not Villa Roma saying they're going to bring in bands, and it is inside, so I'm not sure that would bother me.
Joe, just a quick question for you. We've gone through a very detailed procedure on a new license there. Are we, I want to be sure on renewals are being as consistent as possible. Are we meeting that criteria?
You are. Again, with renewals of licenses, baleran factors only apply to liquor licenses, and that is at the discretion of the board if you are doing a renewal hearing with the understanding that it's tied to potential discipline, which could include revocation. So you have to rely on baleran, section 23, public need for that, but that's only for liquor licenses.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second then, ask for a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I tried to call Ed, but just got his voice message. I'm a little concerned at the moment that I haven't been able to catch up with him. Michael, you want to move into the next one? We'll follow this list and go back up.
I do. I move that we approve the 2021 Annual Common Vicular License Renewal for Ruggies Breakfast and Lunch, 707 Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Don, did you have?
No, just adjusting my glasses.
Sorry. I'll take a roll call then. Don, I'll go to you first.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And move that we approve the 2021 Annual Inholders License Renewal for Howardport Seafair, DBA Moon Custer's Tavern, 86 Sisson Road.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? I'll go with the roll call. I'm an aye. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
So that's carried. That brings us back then to D, and I'm reluctant to take an action on that tonight, Joe, if we don't have a full board, because that's a fairly major.
I don't think we should without, excuse me, Larry, I don't think we should without Ed anyway, you know.
I'm, Larry, if I may?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with going through some more of the agenda and seeing if we get Ed back, and at very least, we do have some people that have joined tonight to discuss that, and I think that we could have discussion with no votes if the rest of the board agrees, that we could have some discussion without a vote anyway on that. But I think if we keep going through the agenda in hopes that Ed comes back, we're not delaying much.
Just, I agree. Let's move on then to old business, and Joe, this repairs back?
I'm prepared to make a motion on this as well.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
I move that we approve the proposed job description for the Director of Planning and Community Development relative to the Planning Department and Community Development Organizational Structure as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion, only discussion, Larry, that I would throw in there is that it was mentioned in the memo that they took into consideration the ask by Selectman McManus and added to this description.
Correct. Joe, comment if not, and I appreciate that, we're working together on this. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call then, if there's no discussion. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Joe, I'll bring over to you and your troop to see Dan here and Griffin here to discuss this.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In a moment, I'll turn it over to our Water Wastewater Superintendent. But as I had mentioned last week, we were in, really hamstrung and impacted by the school vacation week, so Dan has done some great work as always, and laid out what staff is looking for for support as we get into the revision process as well as revision strategy on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it straight over to our Water Wastewater Superintendent for his input.
Hello, Dan.
How's it going? I'm just going to try to share my screen here. All right, so I can't see anyone, so I'm going on a blind screen here, so I'm just going to start and keep going, and if anyone has a question in a way, please interject verbally, because I can't see. So what I wanted to go through tonight with the revision strategy, I touched upon it last week, you know, and it's really seven steps within the strategy, and it's intended to provide an open and transparent process for identifying components of our CWMP that we're looking to revise. And we're looking through this process to gain input from community stakeholders, and when I say stakeholders tonight, I'm referring to, you know, residents, board members, elected officials, town staff, and work to provide draft recommendations consistent with stakeholder input. So the first step is to identify. So we don't know what we don't know until we get input. You know, to date, we've had numerous discussions about the construction cost and sequencing, zoning build-out assumptions, we've discussed the updated attenuation figures in East Harwich and IA Systems, but I'm sure that there's more, and I think it's important that we give everybody an opportunity at the onset of this process to bring forward any concerns. And it's important that we do that at the beginning, because what we're looking to do is then take those concerns and take to the next step where we intend on sequencing them into what would be the proper order that we should be addressing them. Ultimately, we're going to be discussing a number of different things, a number of different topics and disciplines with respect to zoning and flows and construction, civil engineering sorts of things. So we really want to make sure that we tackle them in the appropriate order. After we sequence the data, what we want to do, or sequence the topics, we want to gather all the relevant data. We want to get all of the new data that's been published since the adoption of the CWMP. We also want to gather the data that's in the CWMP, because what's really important that we do before we move on and begin our draft is that we establish, we review and establish an understanding of what the current language is and what it says and what it means with respect to our stakeholder input, because that's what we need to understand to know what we need to change within the CWMP to align it with stakeholders' visions. We're also going to look for relevant new data, and we're going to review that against items within the CWMP. There's a number of cost tables and figures that we can look at with updated figures. And really, once we're at a point where we understand what the people want and what the document says, we would move into the input phase, where we would conduct through public meeting to get stakeholder input as to what we're looking to change and what our vision is really. So we know that when we go through this process, it really encompasses where everyone's at. So once we move forward through the public input phase, we can then take that stakeholder input and begin to draft development, develop language. So I think, and now getting to the last slide here, I realized that I missed an important thing, you know, on the first slide, and that was to, I'm just going to jump back, to identify, you know, lead consultant to support town staff through this revision process. You know, and that's really because, as much as Griffin and I enjoy doing this every week, we still have other functions to do, and there's other disciplines that we're going to need support in as we go through this process. So really with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to the board and ready for input as to if we want to think about moving forward with this process, or if we want to, you know, change what we're doing and then come up with a different strategy, I guess, at this point. Griff, if you have anything else to add, please feel free to jump in.
Danny, you hit on it all very nicely, but I think, you know, one of the big things we need to, in order to move forward, would be to engage a consultant to help us with this process, you know, because they know how to get through the process and make these changes and go through the regulatory boards like we would need to.
And just at that point, we're, at this point too, I think it's important to note that, you know, we're not in a position to put together a scope of work right now for a consultant, but what we're really looking to do is to identify and gain some input alongside of a consultant so that we can put a scope of work together, because we don't know what that scope's going to include until we gain stakeholder input.
Questions or comments?
Larry?
Michael?
I think, again, great work out of all involved, Dan, Griffin, and whoever else was involved in this. I think it's, we have to change our CWMP. Our CWMP has changed. It definitely needs updating, because there's a lot of misinformation in that. I believe we made a giant step by hiring GHD to do the modeling, so I do think we've kind of already are going in the right direction to get real information. I think we've got increased public involvement, which it seems to be spreading. So I think that, and I'm really not a fan of consultants at this point, and I think on the town level, we often go to consultants. We carefully have to consider who we hire. We carefully have to identify what our scope of work, what exactly we want, which I believe you just laid out a good portion of that. So I would support this. I would ask the, you know, as we went through this process before, we chose to use a certain amount of money out of an old town meeting article, I believe there was a balance left from what we spent to what that actual article was, and since we've used that article now, or it's really not too late to go to town meeting this year and ask for the blessing of town meeting to hire a consultant to put this together. As much public input as we can get through that process, I think we need, and I'm going to ask another question related to, and I probably would wait till the end of the meeting, but related to the wastewater committee that we had, and all it says online is that it's no longer active, but I don't believe this board ever voted to deactivate it. I believe we had a mass exodus, so something to bring up. But I would support this, because I think we're in desperate need of real information to the taxpayers, and I think that we were led astray in some of the East Harwich project, and before we go any further, we should be updating this plan and getting support of town meeting with the updated plan.
I think, Don, go ahead, then.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what Michael said. Personally, any plan that gets the public's focus and input is a good plan. I want to take note that even our own Selectmen don't generally see DHY discussions, and Dan and Joe and the gang have always been pushing forward about the need to have a basis upon which to make the argument to do anything in these phases. It was disconcerting to me to find that the minutes, basically, were the cliff notes of the meeting. It made no mention of something that took 20 minutes for us to espouse, challenging some of the presuppositions that led to actions in this. And just for anybody who's interested, my recollection is that the en masse resignations from the Wastewater Implementation Committee were almost entirely based on the fact that even the committee, never mind the public, was just shut out from the discussion. They never got relevant information they requested, and this is, we've been talking about this now for two months. This is the perfect time for us to, we've done two phases, two contracts out in East Harwich, it's the perfect time for us to sit back and say, okay, were those assumptions real? Were they not real? And if they are real, what does that lead us to do? Anything else is going to wind up being shoot, draw, aim, and it's all out of sequence. Anything else is going to wind up being shoot, draw, aim. And it's all out of sequence. We shouldn't be talking about building more stuff until we can build some confidence first. That's, that's the real problem right now is Dan's been very big on trying to identify numerically what's compelling to do and how much this saves us versus that. And it, it would be insane to take actions without the underpinning of this process. So I commend everybody involved in this.
My comment would be, we do need, I think a lot of good information exists in the CWMP. Doesn't mean it, which is put together by MEP, you know, it wasn't a CDM Smith activity, but it's now 15 years old. We do need to look at. I agree with that. My, my input in this would be, I would like a top priority to be put on our local comprehensive plan. Because that's our mechanism that we've used in the past, and we're, and we've been delayed on that, of what our vision is for the town. And that, I think our opinion all along has been that that's a driving force, that the CWMP is intended to help inform and to guide. And somehow, we've let the CWMP almost become our local comprehensive plan, was it backwards? I would like to be sure that's the top priority so that they tie together. And I know that puts some pressure on our planning department, but that's, that's where we, we've always intended to have our, what our vision of what the town should look like. And I commend, as you guys have, the, the steps that Dan and Griffin and Joe put forward as we try to, because these are, these are broad strategies. Now we can separate these out into specific talking points and discussion points going forward within that framework. So it's a great, it's a great document.
Mr. Chair, just one more comment. Just to be really clear, what I was saying was aimed at a particular thought. I don't know how the rest of the board's going to feel, but I'm not willing to advance, I mean, I know we've got placeholders, but I'm not willing to advance building any hard assets anywhere unless we go through this endeavor first. Because the, the assumptions are stale, and we're not even sure what we built is where it should be built and how big it should be built. So before we start spending a ton of money and borrowing it so that people have to pay it back, I really, I wouldn't support anything going, especially to this town meeting until this endeavor is done.
Other comments?
So I, this is Steve Ford, Larry. I, I, I would support the comments of Don and Mike. I think we'd need to move ahead with a consultant.
Agreed. I think we all agree to that. The chore will be to get the scope of work so we get the consultant who's working with this as we move forward.
Right.
Other comments?
If not, we'll...
Could I add something, please?
You may.
Thank you. Clara McClarty from East Harwich. One of the problems with the CWMP is, is that it neglects something that the Cape Cod Commission laid out very clearly as part of the initial process to begin. Before you begin, Bill, you know, planning what you need to build, they laid out specifically that you needed to identify for the town the costs of remediating based on what is already built, and then separately, the costs based on future built construction, whether that's under current zoning or some other plan. Either way, those costs have to be enumerated clearly with public meetings. And the public has to have input on how much we are willing to spend to facilitate future construction. And I have heard from a member of the Wastewater Implementation Advisory Committee and other people in East Harwich who were involved at the time, when I, I didn't live in East Harwich at the time, that they tried to raise concerns and ask for that information, and it was denied. So that is really an underlying flaw. There may be some good information in the CWMP, but it's built on a flawed foundation. And so I think Dan's plan is excellent because he's going to go back, this plan goes back to that problem and begins to rebuild to address it.
Thank you, Clara.
Larry?
Yeah, Michael?
If I may, I'm a big fan of giving direction, and I'm, I'm looking at two department heads sitting on the, on the screen. And, and they gave a presentation, and I believe there was an ask. I heard your, your comments loud and clear, Larry, and I think that the board is due an update on, on where we stand with the local comprehensive plan. Certainly not on the agenda tonight, but maybe we could re-agenda in the near future that conversation and just kind of where we are, where we think we're going with it in a timeline. And maybe we leave tonight's meeting with a little direction for the two department heads and the town administrator to start at least acquiring about consultants. That way, they have a task and certainly not a money obligation at this point to the town. But they'll have some direction, and we won't have to have two or three more meetings discussing it before they move forward.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I have two comments.
Okay.
And they're not in, in response to the presentation. Should I wait till you close out? It's, it's more to do with the general topic. Do you want them now?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's continue this now, and then I'll, then I'll get you back in.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think, Larry, just as a point of order, if it, if it's not on the agenda and it's not related to an agenda item, we shouldn't be speaking of it. So it might have to come back next week.
Yeah. Joel, let me...
Mr. Chair?
Joel, could you respond? Because I know you've had some discussion on the local comprehensive plan, but I think an update in the near future slam after as well. Yep, I, I agree with that, and I can certainly do that shortly. Okay. Now, Don?
Mr. Chair, would it be in order to make a motion to support the pathway that was presented to us tonight?
I, it is, this for me, because I'd also like to include in that motion our, with appropriate funding of hiring a consultant to help.
I'm trying to be sensitive to Michael's thought that we, that we probably want to go, if we have the time, we probably want to ask for permission to use those funds. It, it seems, we're two months away from town meeting. I mean, I'm not sure that we're waiting that long.
So I think without a motion, if the board members give a general consensus, I think that Dan, Griffin, and Joe Powers are probably clear of what we're asking them to come back to us with. And I would, you have my consensus on that.
Quick question.
Joel, you comfortable, you have enough information to move forward? Well, more than that, I want to hear from my water wastewater superintendent, who wanted to ask a question, I think.
Just, you know, with, with the conversation, it's been brought up a couple of times that, you know, we are a couple of months away from town, town meeting. You know, would this be something that the board, like you said, would consider requesting funding for at town meeting? And that is, that is the goal we should be working for, soliciting, you know, qualifications for consultants and, and getting to that point?
And we'd like it to go that far. I'd like for you to identify the scope. And, and we look at the funding, and we'll determine whether we need to go to town meeting or not for the funds. Depends on, I think, what the, what the amount is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The going to town meeting part, I understand where Michael's coming from. I've actually espoused this in a number of, a number of occasions over the last four years. We've identified what the funding source could be with the article. All it would require is a warrant article that asks the town meeting for approval to do that, is to use that money. I mean, it's not like we're trying to utilize anything new. Though, the reason I brought up, it's only two months, is they could continue to plan with the assumption that that funding source would be the funding source. But we could also, since we're this close to town meeting, it wouldn't be difficult to actually ask if, you know, that we could do this endeavor and the funding source would be identified as money left over in article, whatever, from whatever year.
Okay. Thank you, Don. I, I think we'd reach this enough then. We have a direction, Joel, I think, going forward? And Dan and Griffin? Sandy, do you have a comment? I'd like to keep it very brief.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, I'm all in favor of what Dan and the team is doing. And I didn't want to side rail that discussion, but he, one of the first steps Dan pointed out was the, to identify some, some key issues. And I'd like to identify two items. One is, costs need to be accurately represented to the best of our ability. It's not a exact science. You could call it a soft science economics. And obviously, Phase Two has taught us a lot of things. And in going through those numbers, Phase Two added up to $39,760,000. That's assuming $10,000, $10 million for Contract Three, and we still don't know if that number's high or low.
Sandy, let me, let me stop you there, because we all agree that we need to do a better job on the costing. So I don't know if we need to go through the details. What, what's the second point then?
So I'd like to add, add some detail. So in the newspapers, it was reported that the tie-in for sewers would be $3,000 to $6,000. Chatham has a very explicit cost breakout for their tie-ins. And the average homes, not including the pumping grinder pumps, it was $10,100. If you have a grinder pump, the average was $20,000. I think the newspapers should update their report on that. And then on the IAs, it's been said multiple times that IAs would be three times the cost of sewer, and that's just not true. If you break out the $39 million for Phase Two, that breaks up, if you break it by parcels, there's 667 parcels. That would be $69,610 per parcel. If you wanted to break it up into dollars per kilogram per year, it'd be $19,000, just over $19,000 per kilogram per year. And when you look at IAs, I've done a few in-depth studies.
Sandy, if I may, let me, we'll come back and have those discussions.
It's just 30 seconds.
That's really off-topic of the schedule we had tonight. We'll, we'll, you have, we have plenty of opportunity to discuss this.
It just, I just, I understand, but IAs would be $10,000 per kilogram per year.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Wrong order, Sandy. It's just not on the agenda. It's not fair for the rest of the public.
Let me move on. You'll, you'll have plenty of opportunities when we bring back the details on the agenda. That's, Joel, can we, we're settled on that. Ed is with us now. I think I got an email. He sent us all, he has some electrical problems. Or Ed, are you, you want to say hello to us? Well?
Yes.
Are you, you're with us, Ed, right?
Yes, I am.
Joel, do you want to, let's move back to the agenda then, to the item? Items, Mr. Chairman, yep. So if I could first bring up the first topic and then turn it directly over to Selectman McManus. As I've indicated, Item D on your agenda is a potential warrant article that's in draft form and that supports Selectman McManus's request previously to establish an article that would raise the rooms tax for a hotel motel short-term rental from 4%, the rate that it's been at since 1987, up to the allowable amount of 6%. And then beyond that, that the 2% difference be earmarked and set aside for wastewater use. And then before Mr. McManus begins, I do want to emphasize that Articles E and F are of my own doing, and I have a brief presentation for the board on that. Because again, these are just draft prospective articles for consideration at a future meeting. Okay. Thank you, Joel. Ed, do you wish to speak to the agenda item D?
Well, yeah, it's, the legislation that expanded the, actually, the rooms, the expansion of the allowable local option on the rooms occupancy tax went into effect, trying to remember if it was 2012 or 13. Many towns, many towns at that time, some towns put it into effect then, others waited a few years, and I've put it in, a number of towns on the Cape have dedicated it to a variety of special purposes. A few have let the revenue just fall to the general fund. But as we have begun starting to implement our wastewater project and our, seeing the, the costs that it's incurring, both the capital costs, which we're covering through debt exclusion passed at the ballot, but also operational costs, which we're having to appropriate money out of the general fund to start paying. It would seem appropriate to look for an additional revenue source to start covering these costs. So not all of it has to be borne by our resident taxpayers. At this point, I believe there's 11 out of the 14 towns on Cape Cod have enacted the, the higher level of local option tax on all of the towns. Several of the towns on Martha's Vineyard and one, and town in Nantucket have also. So I felt we should have this in consideration for the future set to be passed at this coming town meeting with an effective date of going into effect of January 1st of 2022, and with a specific purpose of funding wastewater costs in the town.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing that comes to mind is, this is the second discussion we've had about this, albeit that we're not just going to willy-nilly dump this into the general receipts, but both of them are at the 11th hour before a town meeting. We're in the middle of a pandemic, which, God help us all, hopefully will resolve the summertime, but we don't know that for a fact. And we just got through the discussion that we're not really going to be going full bore into building new stuff until we can verify what it is we need and where it has to go. I think this is premature. I mean, and not only premature, but why are we talking about this again right before a town meeting? We've had a whole, a year and a half since the last discussion. I'd feel a lot more comfortable about this with the public being involved because this just smacks of us trying to sneak something through in the winter that nobody was aware that we were looking at.
Don, other discussions? I, I do, is Ryan Castle, are you on the, on our call?
No, Scott LaJoy is.
Yes, Ryan's not here with us, but I'm here.
Okay, I mentioned Ryan because he did send a email with some information. Scott, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so we, we, we support...
Scott, could you just identify when you say we, who, who we?
Sorry, the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors.
Okay, thank you.
We're not, we don't oppose the, the increase from the 4% to 6% level. We did mention in a, in a letter to you today that we were hoping that the, that the date spelled out when this begins is January 1st, and it sounded like Ed had, had, had made that change. It'd be January 1st, 2022, because as you know, taxes, it's based on your actual stay, not your booking. So people have already booked it for a certain, if people have booked by now, they, they would be surprised come summer post-July 1st if this were to go into effect on July 1st. if this were to go into effect on July 1st, that, that they would also owe another few percentage points above what that, what they were quoted for. So all we ask is that it's pushed back to January 1st.
Thank you, Scott. Other comments?
Larry?
You have Cindy Williams on the line, too, just to remind you.
Okay, let's, let's go, let's go there first, and Michael, I'll come back to you. Cindy?
Thanks, Don. I have a number. I believe there may be a few of the hotel properties here on the call. I did send an email once I did see the packet, so they were aware, and they were given the link to be on the call if they would like to. As Mr. Howell did allude to, we're in the 11th hour, but we're also prior to the season, where these, this sector has probably been one of the hardest hit. Yes, they ramped up towards the end and did well. But again, we're going to be asking them to now be challenged to then reach out to their guests. Yes, Mr. LaJoy just mentioned it's going to start in January, so that helps a little, but still, we're, we're trying to be kind and support our businesses, yet we're challenging them with adding 2% more. And I get the wastewater and all that, but we're also trying to support these poor little businesses. A couple of our inns have just recently sold, have new owners, and here we go. So I'm, I'm a little torn on this one, guys.
Cindy, are there others that wish to?
Larry, just before, I'd like to ask Ed a question.
Go ahead.
Ed, when, Ed, when would this go into effect? It's not for quite a while, right?
Wouldn't go into effect until calendar year 2022.
So next year. Sharon?
Hi, so I'm one of the innkeepers that Cindy was referring to, and, excuse me, a 50% increase in the room occupancy tax is significant, okay? If we're doing this just as another way to get money, it's a hard thing to swallow, because it's, you're targeting a very specific demographic. And I highly resent the comment that Ed made that doing this through the room occupancy tax would be good, because then we won't have to burden the people that live in this town. I live in this town. My business is in this town. I live in my inn. So the fact that he said that by doing this, you won't have to burden the rest of the residences, I find that so offensive, and I'm trying to remain calm as I say that. But do you understand where I'm coming from? And I already have bookings for 2022. Because of COVID, people moved from last year to this year, and now they're moving to next year. And to go back and tell them another 2%, I think we need to do this in the year where we don't already have bookings in place. So if you're going to go and do this, then let's wait and do it till 2023, where most of the properties here do not have a lot of bookings. This is, this is hard. And if this is a service that's good for the whole town, then the whole town should bear the cost of it, not just your targeted businesses, where you can find a way to take extra money from them. Not just us. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Bob? Did you have a comment as well?
You know, this is, this is kind of interesting to me, because right now, we're paying 17, I'm sorry, 12.45%. If we go in and we get into the community impact fee and you add that in, we're going to be up to 17.45%. That's a 40% increase on tax. Now, I applaud the board for trying to be very business-conscious, and you have that, done that over and over. But for some reason, you think that renters of property that they have are on a different thing. Oh, we'll just pass that along to the people that rent. But that's not the way it really works, because as a renter, I have to cover all the other costs that are in there yearly, you know, taxes, insurance, utilities, and so forth. So I don't have the ability to raise the rent on my property enough every time you hit with another, now potentially 6% that you're going to hit to us. So I agree 100% with Sharon. Why are you selecting us, this industry of renters and realtors that rent and act as agents, and putting the onus on them? It's totally unfair. It should be throughout the town to cover these costs. It shouldn't be kicked on. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I'm looking at people that show up on the screen. Bill, I'll go to you next. Unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think it's unfair to target people who rent their houses. You know, I don't mind seeing my property tax increase, but you know, if it's targeting just renters or people who rent their houses, then that's something else. So I'm, of course, I'm opposed to it, but you know, as far along into the future as you can put it, the better.
Thank you, Bill. Michael, I cut you off before that the, these folks speak, but go ahead.
Yeah, you did. Larry, my objection stands as it was two years ago. I, I think that the, the addition of the 5.7% state taxes and the addition of the water collaborative at 2.75, which tonight we got some new information on, but there's no guarantee that the residents of Howard's are going to benefit from that 2.75%. It's a, it's a tax-and-spend society, Larry. We, we as a board have not identified, and I know Joe Powers mentioned, Town Administrator mentioned 1987 or 1997, I didn't quite hear what he said, when the 4% went into effect. What, what changed, though, a year and a half to two years ago, was we added short-term rentals to this. And by adding that, the, the short-term rentals people went from 0% to 12.45%. And, you know, Cape Cod is still a destination place that the bulk of these businesses make their money in three months. They have the ability to make all of their money in about three months, and then the shoulder seasons that we've created. I'd appreciate it if everybody that's not talking, talking muted their mics, because I'm getting feedback. To add another 2% doesn't seem like a lot to a lot of people, but it is a lot. And it's a lot in my mind on perception of people booking coming to Cape Cod. And if I lived outside of Cape Cod and was choosing somewhere to go, I would choose another community, another state, because we're impacting not only the, the short-term rentals, but we'd be impacting the inns. We'd be, we'd be impacting all of the businesses, because with the additional taxes, people aren't going to go out to eat as much. They're not going to, they're not going to spend as much in our local businesses. And I think the town of Harwich and this board, for several reasons, should reject this. And we shouldn't even put it on the table. And we should welcome these people that are coming to spend their money in the town of Harwich, to the town of Harwich without overtaxing them. Let's talk about the additional money that we've raised, that we, we still, I don't have a number yet, and I apologize if I missed it when I missed the meeting. But the additional 4% for the short-term rentals, that was a significant number. We dumped it into the general fund, which will ultimately turn into free cash, which will ultimately go shopping for trucks and equipment with, with no plan. If you guys want to make a plan, let's make a plan to take the 4% and dedicate half of the 4% to wastewater, and only 2% go into buying trucks and equipment and capital items. Our budget is $73 million in the small town of Harwich, and I've said it for the last six years. We need to stop. It's 73 million, and now we're asking upwards of 17% in taxes. It's, it's ridiculous, and we as a board should take a stand. And wastewater was expensive, but as to Selectman Howell's comments, we just chose, or we've been choosing to freeze projects coming before town meeting. There's a lot more time to think this through, and it's a lot more than just the inns. It's the short-term rental, which, by the way, we heard an awful lot of people talk about the having to rent their homes, to keep their homes. That conversation hasn't come up, but there's people that are renting short-term so that they can keep their houses, and we're kicking their legs out from underneath of them. So I strongly object to this. There is no plan on the past money that we've raised, and, and we should go back and figure that out before we continue to add percentages. And then with that, Larry, I have one question for Scott, and it's just a clarification. So if Scott LaJoy is still online, I'd ask if that non-objection was a vote of the board or, or where that came from, because I believe your organization strongly opposed two years ago the change in these taxes.
We, you know, we, we feel that the percentage increase is, if it is going to wastewater and the, and the issues that have to be dealt with in town, and because so many of other, other communities have moved up in the, in this higher percentage.
I don't want to cut you off, Scott. It was just a question of, is this, is this a consensus or a vote of your board as a whole? That's one question. Second question was, did you strongly object two years ago to the increase in taxes?
Our board did not vote on this. I can, I can ask Ryan what, what the situation was, and the, the situation a few years ago, I was not here. I would have to check with Ryan. He would, he would know.
Well, just for the record, I would like, just because you announced your organization, I, I think it's important for the record that we know if it was a vote of the board, and I would also think it would be important to understand if you objected years past. So if you could get this board information back through Joe Powers, I would appreciate it.
I would do that, sir.
Thank you.
That's, I think we have one other. John, do you wish to speak to this?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I support this?
Sandy, you, Sandy, sure, on this topic?
Yeah, I support what Ed McManus said. I do support this motion to raise the taxes on short-term rentals. Wastewater is very expensive, and we're going to have to do some wastewater. And I, I feel that the, you know, this, this influx of people that come to rent are adding to the load. So it, it seems to make sense, but I will say, I was not aware of what Mike McCaskill said, that the, the previous tax increases did not go towards the wastewater. And I think that that's a shame. It really needs to be appropriated to, to what people think it is, and that's wastewater. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Sandy. Bob? And I'll go bottom first.
I just, I'll keep it short. But why is the burden put on a small few of 20, 30% of the people that have to rent their homes or rent their homes and do that? Why are we paying? We're already paying this. We have to pay the same wastewater. Everybody else does. Then we have to pay the extra percent that you're adding on, on top of that. We're paying our share. We pay the share like everybody else does for that process. So it's not fair to double-dip us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be real clear, to just go back to what I was saying. Whether or not this is a good idea is secondary to how we are trying to do this. Again, we're doing it at the last minute, going into a town meeting. We do public hearings all the time. This is just flat-out wrong to come up with March, to throw it on an agenda in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of discussion of a town meeting warrant, not to encourage people to actually come in and opine on this. This is, this is just wrong. We don't have any urgency, because we're not going to be weighing more pipes this year. We're actually reexamining what we're doing. And there, there were a ton of taxes lathered on, and Michael's right. They also added a new class of people that weren't subject to this before. I'd be really interested in hearing from those people, and it shouldn't require Cindy Williams to go making calls to people to say, "Look what's on the agenda on Monday night." It should be a public hearing. Or I can't even get to the point of saying whether it's a valid tax. Personally, I think it would be worthwhile to explore, because people who are coming in, who are contributing to the problem, could be paying for it. But again, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't know how it's going to shake out this year. And why are we hiding? Why aren't we doing a public hearing?
Let me, Mr. Berkeley, do you wish to speak?
I've been listening to the conversation, and my feelings are that we were hit just a couple of years ago with this tax that went right to our renters, and it just seems unfortunate if we would have to hit them again this soon. I mean, they, some of these people have been coming back for year after year, and all of a sudden, there was a tax thrown in, and then a year later, there's another tax put on top of it. They're going to feel as if they're being targeted for this, whatever it is the town is using it for. They, certainly as renters, they will know, but they're going to feel as if they're being hit, whatever it is the town wants to do. And I think it's, it's been coming in too fast, too soon.
Thank you. Ed, do you have any comments on this discussion?
Can I weigh in again, Larry?
You may.
You know, Mr. McCaskill started to touch on it. This doesn't just affect the inns, the hotels, and the short-term rentals. Think about the last few weeks you, I've been on, telling you guys what the new business are, is, new businesses that are coming into our town. Those are affected, too. If, say, someone doesn't make a reservation, they're not going to go to the new ice cream shop. They're not going to go to any of the retailers that are now closed due to the pandemic. I'm looking forward to reopening. So this is not just hitting the, initially, the hotels and inns and short-term rentals, but other businesses as well, and our restaurants. They've all struggled the last 10, 12 months. It's not the time, guys.
Ed, do you have any follow-up discussion, then we'll end this?
You know, a couple of things. One, you know, I don't really have any particular problem if you want to make the effective date January of 2023. That would be acceptable, you know, fine with me. I, I just, you know, and as to the issue is, you know, we, I've asked in the past years that during the fall, we have scheduled on the agenda a time to have that discussion about what issues we want to see on the town meeting warrant. And, and we, we'd never seemed to be able to get to that point early on to have these debates, decide which ones need to be put out for a public hearing, which ones we want to become high priorities or low priorities. You know, in, in past years, we would be talking about the agenda, the warrant, in December, because the due date was for that first Friday in January. But we've pushed, pushed it back, you know, again and again theoretically, so we aren't as rushed, but we seem to be more rushed at this point. You know, I don't know what else I can say.
Okay. Steve, do you have a comment, and then we'll?
No, accepting that the comment by Ed to pushing it to 2023, I think is probably a wise idea. And it's certainly a revenue stream that we need to consider. So those are my two comments.
Larry?
I, let me, I just want to weigh in briefly, Michael, is that I go, I go back and forth on this, because I do think we always have to consider revenue streams. I would, my view right now, though, would not be to take, bring this forward to town meetings this time, even with a later date. I think we have to have a further discussion, and if we want to next year for '23, that, that may be possible, but I wouldn't move it ahead now, even, because we rolled on something even if we're for a later date. uh, I wouldn't move it ahead now, even because we've rolled on something even if we're for a later date. Uh, just, Mike, I want to weigh in my view on that. Go ahead.
I appreciate that, Larry. And now I guess that was gonna be my question would be if, 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 um, I think Don and I, it's pretty clear where we stand. Um, you just made it very clear where you stand. So this is an irrelevant comment, but I'm making anyway. If we're gonna talk about, uh, January first, twenty twenty-three, let's talk about it next year. And let's take a suggestion, let's talk about it, uh, much earlier in the year and not in the last three months. So with what, with what you just said, it seems to me to be a no brainer to hold off on this because, um, you, you just got, uh, confirmed from Ed and Stephen that they had no problem waiting until January twenty twenty-three. Larry, come to the point voting on.
Larry?
Yes.
Well, that then becomes your, your basics circular argument. The reason we're putting it off to, agreeing to put it off to twenty twenty-three is because we're indication that people have already booked then. So if we wait until next year and, uh, it will be then the argument, well, we've already had people book into twenty twenty-four. So we need to put it off even further. But well, if it's gonna be two years out, then we won't can, we won't put it back for consideration until the following year. And that, that's sort of a, a process that never ends. So, you know, ten years before it becomes lands, gets before the Board of, uh, the Town Meeting for them to actually discuss it and decide.
Yeah, Larry, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
Can I say one thing first, though, Michael?
You can, uh, Don.
I just want, again, I want to be clear. Perhaps we didn't live through the same year together. Uh, we didn't have town meeting until September for this year. If we do what I suspect we're about ready to do, there is no problem in holding a public hearing in the summer when everybody is here and can, uh, make comments about this with an eye towards putting this on the next year's town meeting. It's not a circular argument at that point because we're giving clear direction of what we're gonna do based on public input. My concern still is we have not done that in either of these two discussions. We just throw it on an agenda a little bit before town meeting and say, yeah. The only difference this year is that it's targeted to something, but in the meantime, there've been a we've been lathering on all of these taxes. And I'd be really interested in knowing what the official position of the Realtors are and what some of these other businesses are. They can't rely on Cindy rounding up a few people because in the eleventh hour, we're trying to do something.
I, I think we've, uh, discussed this, uh, pretty shortly tonight. Uh, Michael, I'll entertain a motion if you wish to make one.
Yes, stand by.
I thought this was Ed's motion.
Uh, Ed can make a motion. I, I don't mind.
Ed, you have, that was, that was a motion or just a discussion?
Well, uh, you know, uh, I'd move that we place that this, uh, article be included in the warrant.
Okay.
Coming down meeting.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved and seconded. Uh, I think we've had a lot of discussion. I'll take a roll call. Uh, Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
No.
Don?
No.
And I have a no for the reasons I stated, so, uh, I think we're all clear. We we need to, uh, give it some thought. Okay, Joe, uh, next on the agenda?
Uh, next on the agenda, I'm gonna tread very lightly. Uh, it's item E, which is the community impact fee. And as I stated earlier, uh, this is not in response or relation to anything that Selectman McManus had done. Rather, in doing my, um, due diligence and research on Selectman McManus's article, I came across this community impact fee and developed a draft article for the board's consideration at a future meeting. Um, so that's where that came from. The only difference, if you will, is that this talks about a, uh, a tax of no more than three percent. But if you adopt this tax, you have to identify at least thirty-five percent of the proceeds must be earmarked to an infrastructure project. So it's got several different components to it. Um, I, I'm, I'm well, um, uh, well considered based on the previous discussion. Um, but it is out there for the board's consideration. And then separately, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the, the third item under our, I, I, I map.
Uh, Joe, let me on that discussion. Let me bring, uh, Ed back in.
Sure.
Well, I, I thank the, the, the town administrator for pointingly pointing out that this was not my suggestion. Um, uh, and it clearly isn't. Um, if you look at the legislative history of the enactment of this provision of the expansion of the rooms, occupancy tax, all of these community impact fee issues were added at the behest of uh, the legislators from the urban areas of Boston, Worcester, um, uh, Cambridge. Uh, and it was to ameliorate the significant problems they were having of investors coming in, buying up apartment and condominium units in the middle of, uh, of large buildings and starting to run them like a hotel. Um, that is not the issues that we have to deal with and problem uh, of, uh, uh, dig, basically digging into the affordable housing stock that we have, that that they were having in, in those cities. And so I would never uh, support enacting these community act, uh, uh, community impact fees. Um, uh, in the way they are, um, mandated, they're very complex, um, and they're based on the belief that, uh, these, uh, uh, agglomerations of apartments here and there around a community are being run professionally. Uh, in essence, like a, uh, uh, a hotel, but spread out among several buildings.
Thank you, Ed. And Joe, uh, I'm sorry. I hope, I hope I didn't interrupt you too soon because I do appreciate you trying to think up new, uh, new concepts, but go ahead.
Well, well, thank you. And, and it's not that I'm deferring the, uh, the thanks. It wasn't that I was thinking up new concepts, but I do want this board and, and by extension, the general public to know that if I find information that I think the board may be interested in, I will pursue it and present it in the manner that which I have, uh, because that led to item number F. And I think regardless of the, um, the sentiments of what we think about items D and E, statements were made earlier that there is, you know, revenue that's coming into the town that's fairly new. It's the short term rental money and it's going directly into the general fund. And so in these discussions and my research on items D and E, uh, I've worked with council and council has identified that the town could create, uh, as you see in that article, article, item F, a wastewater special purpose stabilization fund. So if the town is desirous of, uh, putting aside some of the current tax revenue that is generated to make sure that it doesn't all, uh, drift away to the general fund, you could, uh, establish this article. The language would change, uh, because it was presumed to be based on the previous two. Uh, but the board could, or the town could enact that to set aside the, the revenue that you've indicated has been lost, uh, generally. Again, just for the board's consideration.
So, Joe, your intent at this point would be to rewrite that based on their current revenues rather than the, uh, articles above then?
Well, only if the board is, uh, so willing to have me go through that.
If we are so inclined.
Yep.
Comments, questions?
Larry?
Michael?
I would, I would guess, I mean, I would certainly support, uh, the creation of that funds. Uh, I think what Joe just said, we would have, the board would have to bring this back to have a conversation because it's revenue we're already collecting. But I would support taking at least half of the four percent that we're already collecting and put that into this special fund. But I do think that it would have to be re-agenda.
Um, Yep.
And, and to bring it back. I mean, I think we could vote the fund tonight if we wanted to, but why not bring the two of those back together and allow for the debate?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, uh, I'm certainly in favor of it myself, Don.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna weigh in. I'm in favor of the concept that since it's what we're already collecting, redirecting it to something that's substantive and i- is a capital outlay, I would love to see happen because we've had this horrible habit of taking stuff and just throwing it into the bucket of general revenues and spending it out. Uh, this is a great idea to carve out, uh, something that we know is going to be a long term obligation.
Okay, thank you, Don. Uh, Ed, comment?
Um, I don't have any problem with this. I think, you know, it, uh, will take an analysis of, uh, uh, what our revenues we're collecting, uh, currently. Um, and, uh, what the impact depending on how much you, uh, dedicate, uh, to this fund, what the impact will have on uh, our free cash, which we do use also for, for capital purchases. Um, and, uh, uh, if the, those, uh, capital purchases are significantly impacted, um, then, uh, uh, what that will mean going on down the road.
Okay, uh, Steve?
Uh, just, uh, I, I think, uh, it is a good idea. Uh, agree with Michael and Don and Ed, but, uh, but I would really seek the guidance of Carol and Joe relative to how we're looking at our budget and planning that budget and how these revenues have already uh, fit into, uh, you know, how we're looking at handling the budget obligation. So I mean, it, it's gonna take, I think that's a rep repetitive of what Ed just said, but, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna take the insight of both Joe and Carol to, uh, to guide us on this.
Uh, Joe, I think where we are is, uh, we'll, we'll bring it, ask you to bring it back with some of these questions answered so we can, uh, the consensus seems to be, is, uh, is directionally, uh, we're all in favor.
Larry? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Michael?
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to, uh, say I agree with Stephen's last comments about, um, Joe and Carol taking a hard look at where that money's actually being spent uh, and Ed as well. And then take a, take the, uh, a second to thank, recognize and thank Joe Powers for bringing new ideas forward. Uh, I, I think that that's, um, refreshing to, uh, we, we may not agree with it, but I think it's refreshing to at least have things put in front of us um, by a town administrator that's trying to get additional revenue streams.
It actually shows some respect that we're a thinking body, so I'll, I'll take that.
Agreed.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did we have, uh, uh, have we had, uh, motions made on the last two items?
We have not.
Do that. Um, I'd move that, uh, we don't consider placing, uh, the community impact fees issue on the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Other discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. Mi- Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Don's muted.
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Do we, Ed, do we have to take an action, Larry?
A motion. I don't think we need a motion on the, uh, uh, the wastewater fund because we asked for that to come back.
Right.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, i- if you were concluded with that, as I mentioned, um, item G is, is coming back with, um, uh, the language that Selectman McCaskill had mentioned. Uh, council was not, uh, prepared to have that uh, after we put it on the agenda, but that is an article that will also be appearing in the warrant. And then, uh, last, Mr. Chairman, if I could just use this, uh, while we have the, the, the audience that we do have. Um, I've, I've made allusions to it before, and I think you've also have done so, Mr. Chairman, but um, I have been working with, uh, our town moderator and our town clerk, uh, to gauge their availability and scheduling. Uh, I continue to work with our assistant town administrator who remains our, uh, interim health agent for the short term. And, um, it's my recommendation that it will come before you for a formal vote at a future meeting. Uh, but that I will be recommending that we, um, have you vote to postpone the meeting on May third to reschedule it to Saturday, May eighth at ten AM. Um, so I just, again, this is not for discussion. It's not on the agenda. But I would be looking to present that to the board for the board to make that motion next week. Um, I just want to get, start getting that thought out there as soon as possible. Um, as, as much as we're seeing, uh, tremendous gains be made in, uh, COVID nineteen vaccinations and reductions in cases. Um, I think everybody understands that the opportunity to have a full town meeting as robust as we want. Um, the, the way to have that, um, is to have it outdoors. But again, more, uh, far more information and discussion on that next week. I just wanted to make you aware of the thought process at this point.
Thank you, Joe. And I, I just commented, I know you've already, uh, sought, uh, legal counsel on, uh, on, on this item as well, so you'll be prepared next week.
Larry?
Michael?
I'm prepared to make motions on the contracts, but prior to doing that, I just, uh, if we could just, I'd like to update Ed on where we went with the other items that he missed. So, Ed, Ed, we voted B and C to refer back to the planning board for public hearings.
Sure.
Uh, those were both unanimous four zero votes, and then we voted H, I, and J, uh, all approvals, four zero votes.
Okay.
Um, okay, I'd move that we accept the, uh, nope, we're on past that. I moved that we execute the contract with, uh, Butcher Municipal North America Inc. For the purchase of a sweeper body and pony motor for the Department of Public Works for a hundred and twenty-five thousand as per, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
I moved that we execute contract with Scoreboard Enterprises, Inc. For the purchase of a scoreboard at White House Field for sixty-two thousand ninety-five dollars.
Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one, Larry.
I, I would just a comment, uh, on both these items. Uh, funds for these have been, uh, in, uh, approved through town meeting. Uh, Scoreboard also has a, uh, partly funded through a gift from, uh, the Red Sox organization. So, uh, we do have funds for these. Michael, go ahead.
All right. So my comment is related to that. On the scoreboard, the Mariners donated seventy-five thousand dollars. The scoreboard costs sixty-two thousand ninety-five. Am I to assume that the fifty-five thousand voted at town meeting will be returned to that bucket in the CPC funds and that the scoreboard will actually be paid for by the Mariners?
Uh, Joe or Griffin, I'll turn that to you.
Uh, sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll start this and then I'll have, um, I'll look to the lefty in the bullpen for the save. Um, that, that's you, Griffin. I know you're not lucky.
I'll forgive you for that.
But, um, i- if I may, the, the total article amount, um, that we had for that was, well, uh, I'm gonna go to the bullpen.
Lefty.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I believe, hi, everyone. I believe the total article amount we had was fifty-five thousand for that, which included, um, safety netting as well. The, um, the gift from the Mariners, the donation that was accepted was not only for the scoreboard, but also for the lighting. Um, the lighting project is, is also underway. Um, we, we just recently had a contract for that. We are going out to bid for the, um, contractor to install that lighting. So the thought is that the Mariners donation will supplement the town's appropriation for the scoreboard and the lighting project. Um, so, so we would not be giving back, uh, money, but, but, uh, I, just so everyone is aware, there was a, um, request for a hundred thousand dollars for this project before the CPC that was rescinded just recently because of the Harvish Mariners stepping up, um, with this donation. I hope that answers your question.
Larry, if I can add to it?
Yes, please.
Griffin, I would only ask, first I'd say thank you. I go, you guys are under, uh, doing a ton of work and we're finishing up procurements that date back years. So I thank you for that. I, I do, I would like a better explanation, uh, to the board and to the public. Um, hopefully in next week's packet as to where the money's gonna go, uh, for the additional, what portion of that, um, it, it doesn't spell out what the article said, and it doesn't spell out what portion the Mariners are paying for this scoreboard. portion the Mariners are paying for this scoreboard versus the $55,000. So I, I think that I would at least like to understand what other projects are being paid for with this money.
I'd be happy to provide a breakdown.
Thank you. That's all.
And I, I can cover that next week under TA's report unless you'd like that to be a specific agenda item. Okay.
I think TA's reports and TA report will, will handle it.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Other discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you. Moving on to town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Two items first, I'm pleased to report a hiring that is set to take effect 14 days from tomorrow, and that is a scale house operator over at the transfer station, gentleman well-known to everybody, Dana DiCosta, who has essentially been serving in that role as a temporary for several, over many months. This is a position that was advertised in, in late fall, early winter of 2020, and it went internally. There were no internal candidates. It was posted externally and we got one applicant and that applicant is Mr. DiCosta. The difference, the reason why it's taken this long is was looking to have the DPW director certify that there is a stable source of funding, which early on was not the case, but very pleased to report that there is a stable and ongoing method to support that position. And we get to get somebody who's been doing the work out of his temporary status and into a permanent status. And then last item, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as I've said before, as you may recall, the Montemoy Regional School District is holding a forum this Thursday evening, March 4th at 6:30 p.m. It is a Zoom meeting with call instructions available on the Montemoy Regional School District's page. And again, the topic is the discussion of the status of the regional school district's elementary schools. So again, that's a community forum on March 4th at 6:30 p.m. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. I assume that the community forum will also be, will be taped, so we can watch it at a later time if we can't make that.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, but I can also make sure that we have it available and can post it on the website.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the selectmen's reports. Michael?
I'm just one request. The, a resident reached out to me today and his problem relates to excise tax and he has not been able to get an answer on whether or whether or not he's supposed to be paying it. He sent me section two of this, Mast, of Mast.gov of the excise tax laws, and this relates specifically to boats. He has an unregistered, unusable boat in his yard. And the way that the state law reads anyway is it's a waterway's user fee. And if you're not using the waterway and, and the boat is not capable of using the waterway, then he shouldn't have to pay excise tax, and that's not the answer he's getting from the town of Harwich. And if you read into a little more on excise tax on vehicles, it only relates to registered vehicles. So Joe, if we could get from Donna, an explanation in writing for why we're not changing that and/or clarification from the state or town council, they would appreciate that, but I don't think we should be sending excise tax bills if they're not supposed to be being sent. Or there should be an appeals process related back to the law.
Thank you. We'll work on that. Thank you.
Question.
Thank you, Mike. I'm happy. I'm sure glad you're not asking me that question. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items. First one came to my attention this past week, which I hadn't actually looked at seriously, that the citizens' activity form seems to be more geared towards hiring an employee than it is welcoming to ask somebody to volunteer in terms of resumes and other things. And I'd like to see if we could at some point revamp that so that it becomes more of a willing, open invitation for people to serve as opposed to, we're not quite sure whether you're up to it or not. That's the first thing. The second one is...
I, I moved it, Don, places a draft in our box to review.
Yeah, it's a good thing it's not agenda'd, Michael. Secondarily, and this one is serious, I'm asking the chair to agenda this item. The Main Street Bog, Leo Kukunis is currently occupying. The chair knows, but the rest of the board doesn't know, that I contacted the chair as the liaison to the Cons Conservation Commission. We've had considerable discussions about passive resistance where no action becomes an action and slowly but surely we're just losing bogs. That particular bog was leased by the Board of Selectmen because there's nobody but the Board of Selectmen that has the authority to enter into a lease. And I, I tried, I mean, I slogged through a three-hour meeting of Conscom from last week. There was no mention of it. Tried getting in touch with Amy and I know that you eventually did, but she didn't call me back. We really need to have this discussion. I am unwilling, and I'm pretty sure that the sentiment of the board is, at least the majority, is in the same place. I am unwilling to give up our heritage because slowly but surely they take no action and the pump houses, pump houses just go away and we, we just have an open field. It is unreasonable to wait any longer. Conscom can't enter into the contract. They weren't a signatory of it the last time around for the lease, but they sure as heck could stop it just by inaction. Want to have them in, that's fine, but the bottom line here is it is not too soon to act because if the, if the lease ends in August and somebody's got a lot of personal property out there and there's no intention on renewing it, he has to take action to remove property. And right now, we should be talking about this because an RFP has to be formulated. It would have to be issued. It has to be responded to and we would have to award it. All of that takes time. And I have this bad feeling that that's what we're banking on is that it will take enough time where it goes past the expiration and I'm not willing to do that. So I would like an agenda, I think, relative to that.
Sure. I did, I, I think Amy has, our Conservation Commission has scheduled that for bid in a couple of weeks to bring it up, but we can, we can agendaize it as well.
I would like them to be invited to our meeting because it really isn't their lease to issue.
I just wanted to add, add to Don's request if I could, Larry.
Sure.
I, I would add that, that, that we should seek a legal opinion if it's the Board of Selectmen's lease, why the Board of Selectmen can't extend the lease for at least a year while we go through a real process on this. So I, I, I think if we have the ability to extend the lease, then we as a board should vote to extend the lease or not extend the lease depending on the direction of the entire board. But why can't we handle it that way and not go through the RFP process? So that's, that's an ask, Larry, a legal opinion.
Yep.
But regardless, I don't want to wait for Conscom to take any action because if anything, they should be on our agenda.
Well, we'll, I'll work this through with Joe and we'll bring it back. Okay. Thank you, Don. Ed?
Oh, yeah. During the earlier discussion, there was a question raised that there wasn't an answer for because the person who seemed to, who would be able to provide that answer wasn't on the call at the time, Mr. Castle. I noticed he's, is present and I was wondering if we could ask him the question of whether the position that Mr. LaJoy presented about the rooms occupancy tax was a position that was voted on the board and what the Realtors Association's position was when this was enacted several years ago.
Ryan, do you wish to comment on, on that?
Sure, I can, I can answer. So, so I want to clarify, the email I sent you guys today, I think clearly outlines it that we do not oppose you raising it, but we do not support it either, right? So we stay silent on the issue of raising room occupancy where, where our concern is, and, and that's our standing policy on short-term rentals, room occupancy tax that we have. What we stay concerned about is if you do go to implement it and raise it, what that implementation date is that I think y'all talked about, and then also the community impact fee. So we stay silent on whether you raise it. We, we've seen communities do it. We have, we, we've seen it not have an effect, then we've seen it has an effect. It's kind of all over the board, so we aren't, we don't get into that. We get into where you spend money. However, yes, when it was at the state level, we did oppose it for several years, absolutely. And we still believe that short-term rentals aren't the same as hotels, however, in, in the way they're operating. But to answer those questions, we do not support or oppose raising it. We just providing a concern around implementation date. And then, yes, when it was at the state level, we did oppose enactment of them to be put toward hotels. So thank you guys very much and thank you for your service. And I'm, I'm always here to, you guys can reach out with questions, Scott or myself, always willing to talk anything related to housing or the real estate market. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ed, anything else?
Nope.
Steve?
I have nothing.
I have nothing tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Removed.
I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Good evening, folks.
Night, everybody.